Good evening. I'd like to call to order this the regular town council meeting for Tuesday, December 12th. Please rise for a moment of silence. Will I have the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Fishbein.
Here.
Laffin.
Here.
Loterno.
Here.
Marrone.
Here.
Chortel.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Testa.
Here.
Zandry.
Here.
Chairman Servoni.
Here. Onto the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve and accept consent agenda items A through K, M through Q, S and T, leaving off L and R.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda as moved passes. The first item removed from the consent agenda is item 3L.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the job description for the town clerk position.
Moved and seconded. Counselor Fishbein, your item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, this item comes before us because of the revision to the charter, which removes the supervision of the town clerk from the town council to the mayor's office. One of the concerns that I had expressed during that process was the fact that the town clerk also serves as the clerk of the council, and that has continued, and that we have a smooth transition in that work. Just historically, February 10th of 2016, the pay for the clerk was increased. Expressly, there was a letter from Chairman Servoni at that time to the mayor stating that since the council secretary has retired, the council decided not to hire a replacement instead of the town clerk, and her office will assume all such responsibilities. When I reviewed the document that's before us, the job description, I do note that some of the duties of the town clerk are listed on here. Specifically, it does say that the clerk will receive, review, and disseminate correspondence to and from town council members. In the past, for instance, I would assume that the letter dated February 10th, 2016, from Chairman Servoni to the mayor was more than likely drafted by the town clerk. In the past, the town clerk has served in that function for various town council members at individual direction. The way I read this job description, it does not include that to have happened. I would suggest that language to the effect of drafts and creates various documents from individual members of the town council at their direction be added to this description to clarify those duties. And with that, I move that language.
Second.
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry, Counselor Fishbein.
Yeah, it suggests that to the portion that says reviews, receives reviews, and disseminates correspondence to and from the town council members is added, and drafts and creates various documents for individual members of the town council at their direction. So moved.
You're the second?
Yes.
Thank you.
Just waiting for the clerk to catch up.
I got it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. My recollection of that particular letter is that I think I authored it, emailed it to the clerk, and asked her to print it on letterhead. But that aside, Counselor Laffin?
I am leery of adding too much town council-specific language because I still don't know that that will forever be permanent. It is in this situation, it is in the circumstance, and it works for, it worked for this council. Maybe in four weeks, it won't work for us anymore. Or maybe six months in, it won't work anymore. But I think a lot of this is what I read, is what the original charter duties of the town clerk were, and the council is kind of piggybacking to the town clerk's office as a side deal. And it's not necessarily to the town clerk that our duties or our requests go to, but it's to that office. So I'm just leery about putting too much town council direct language in there unless, I mean, maybe there's a comeback or a response to that. But that's just, those are my initial thoughts about that. Because that is a deal or circumstance that the nine of us decided to proceed with, and it may not always be the case. And to hire somebody based on those standards, somebody specifically based on those standards, I'm not sure with, again, I think that we've moved our town clerk office duties to the office of town clerk, not so much the specific town clerk. And correct me if I'm wrong, Barbara, you do not do all of our support. We get emails from you, but there are staff that are involved in that, drafting and redoing minutes and things like that.
It's myself and Lisa. It's just two of us.
Right.
But Lisa does all the agendas and all the minutes. Correct.
So, what, Madam Clerk, if I may, what's Lisa's title?
Lisa is a senior clerk. I mean, that's through the classified system that was determined what her title was. On the webpage, we put her as senior clerk slash council staff. But her title through the classified service is senior clerk.
So perhaps at some point, we could participate in her job description to see if we can get more clerk support services. Mayor, you had something?
I have to raise a concern about it, and that is, the position has been made part of the classified service. As such, it reports to the mayor's office. Where there is action taken by the council on something and the formalities of agendas, of, again, accomplished facts, accomplished work product, I don't have any real concern about the town clerk or staff, that office, being involved. But when we start getting into drafting of documents, researching documents, potentially disagreements amongst council members, back and forth, whatever it might entail, I don't think that is a job for someone in the classified service that reports to the mayor's office. Because ultimately, the mayor's office has to see that everyone is doing their job and doing it responsibly. You know, I don't know that the mayor's office wants to sort out whether the town clerk did a good job or a bad job with regard to any individual counselor. So if there's enough work for that, then perhaps the council should have a part-time secretary handling those activities. But individual council people, I think that starts treading or straying over a line of legislative and executive, and I don't want to ultimately be involved in what is happening between council members.
Thank you. Counselor Testa?
Thank you. I have a concern with the concept of the clerk doing anything at the direction of any individual council member. We don't have any power as individuals. We only have power as a group. Applies to all bodies in town. Frankly, I just, I could see that getting out of hand. So, no, I don't like that idea. Thank you.
Counselor Zandry?
I think that right now, what we have to do is we have to address presently where we would get our support from. And right, you know, prior terms that I've served personally, I would go to Sandy to get things that I needed and, and right now, I go to the town clerk's office. And obviously, I follow up directly with Barbara, and she'll assign as needed. Most of the time, she takes my calls, usually something simple. But if it was a little bit more involved, I'm sure she'd assign somebody to it. So right now, I think that does need to be defined. And I'm not going to suggest that the office would ever push back. I doubt they would. But Barbara may not always be the town clerk. So we may be dealing with another town clerk at some point who's a lot more rigid with what they're willing to do and execute out of that office. And unless we've got something to fall back on, I don't think it's good for us. We don't have an avenue to follow up, and then we're outside of a budget area to say, well, gee, now we need to, we need to look into a town council secretary again, part-time. We don't have the budget for it. So we're going to wait till, we're going to wait until budget time to assign. I just think that there's no harm in doing it. We can always amend this. Down the road, if we go back to a town council secretary, we can amend the job description at that point. I don't see the problem with a little bit more definition, just myself, even though I already know the office will do it anyway. I just don't see the problem with formally outlining it. Thank you.
Counselor Fishbein?
So we end up exactly where I had said that we would end up when I opposed the charter. The mayor is arguing, treading upon the legislative and executive branch, and that's exactly what I said, and I heard up here, there wouldn't be a problem. The problem is, is that some of us are more adept at putting things together than others, with all due respect. I know when Counselor Econonopoulos was at the end of the row, he utilized the staff a lot and was able to direct Sandy to put together free information requests. What I'm hearing is that if a counselor like Counselor Econonopoulos was elected, he would have no staff. You know, the expressed reason why the pay was increased was for taking over that role of the town council staff. And I did have Mr. Hutt, thank you, Mr. Hutt, for coming tonight, send to me the job description for the council secretary at the end. And the statement of general duties is acts as a secretary to the town council, responsible for the clerical functions of the council. So that would tread upon what we've been discussing. Transcribes complex dictation from tapes or notes, prepares letters, reports, statements, or memoranda. Handles correspondence, transmits orders and instructions, and gives information to callers on the phone or in person. That's, it's going to happen anyway. Performs difficult clerical work requiring some independent judgment. Relieves the council of clerical detail and minor administrative matters. Performs any or all duties related to the functions of the council. Most of that is not addressed in this job description. So I just want a smooth transition. I can do most of this stuff myself, but I don't want to hamstring the future. So I think for now, because, so we have smooth transition, the language is general enough. As far as direction from individual members, that hasn't been a problem in the past. You know, I mean, in the past, the town clerk who's been our secretary has done things at the behest of the chairman of the council, who even under this job description can't ask this individual to do anything. If you would have, because he's an individual member, he's given no powers under this general description. And none of us could ask her to do something that's enforceable. She might do it electively, but she doesn't have to. And that's the problem. So, that's where we are.
Counselor Sullivan?
You know, I agree with Counselor Fishbein. He just made a great case why we should probably look into hiring a council secretary in a part-time basis. Everything you said leads us to a council secretary, part-time, that can do that type of work. And I think during that April meeting, as I recall, and this is off the top of my head, we talked about down the road, there may be a need for a council secretary in a part-time role if for any reason we felt the town clerk would not be able to handle it. So now you're bringing an issue to us, and you're saying you don't believe that the town clerk can handle this, or we should have access to somebody who can type letters and do all the duties you just described. You made a perfect argument for why we probably need a part-time council secretary. I would not be in favor of adding language to this, but I would be in favor of considering a part-time council secretary. Thank you.
Any comments from the public? Ms. Morganstein?
Gina Morganstein, South Main Street. So, am I clear in my hearing of things? So, when Sandra left, your current town clerk accepted these duties, got an increase of pay in some amount, and then charter revision came about, and authority was moved to the mayor. And the mayor is now suggesting that you should be hiring a separate person to now do this job? At the cost to who? Mr. Counselor, I would assume if you're gonna, Mr. Chairman, if you're gonna hire a secretary, there is some cost incurred to that?
That would probably require a budget amendment.
Yeah.
And drafting a new job description.
Yeah. And I think we would all agree that when budget season comes, tens of thousands of dollars often are being whittled away. So our mayor is here whittling our costs up. I find this pretty interesting. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mayor?
So, clarification again. Previously, the town clerk was appointed by the council. The big difference is, the position now is a department head, part of classified service. That carries a much different, plays a much different role. And certainly, where it's actions taken by the full council, you know, there's no problem. But when we get into individual requests to do one thing or another, sooner or later, there will be a conflict of some kind. And it's just not a good situation to have that kind of individual work being done in an executive branch office.
Mr. Hutt, you've been kind enough to sit there quietly. Thanks for coming.
Thank you for having me.
How does the compensation change now that the mayor appoints the position and she's the clerk, whoever it is, is a department head?
It isn't going to change from 2016. The salary is going to remain. Back in February 2016, I did review, the town of Wallingford has a management compensation matrix that we use to evaluate positions. And back then, before the town clerk was given the raise, I did review the job, and it was evaluated, and that salary range will remain the same.
Thank you. Counselor Chortel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, rookie mistake. I had no idea I could get this stuff from you, Barbara. So it's a great time to find out. Obviously, my orientation, two years ago, there was some neglect from the chairman. So if you could help me write a letter tomorrow on that, we're going to address that. But I'm still trying to figure out, like, under, just for me, I don't, I can't think of a scenario where I would go to the town clerk for anything, like council-related. If I had something I wanted to present, I would put it together myself. I would not go to you. I would feel more confident, no offense, in myself doing, because I'm a control freak about certain things. How much time have you spent, Barbara, this last term, doing all of the stuff that we're talking about? Can you estimate, like, what percentage of your time?
Doing specific things for a specific counselor?
Right. The things that we're voting on to amend the job description, all of these.
So really, you know, there's very little ask of me, of each of you counselors. I mean, look, you know, let's just, for a minute, go backwards and think about how much mail do you all get every day? Not very much. You know, how much correspondence, you know, you're really getting correspondence inter-office from other departments. The second we get it, you get it. I mean, I'm not sitting here telling you to not hire a part-time secretary, but there's not a lot of work for it. I could see hiring somebody to sit here and do your minutes for you. That would be great. Because our office, I think, does the agendas just beautifully, and the correspondence, great. We aren't tapped out by any of you for any of the correspondence or things that you ask. If you ask for a letterhead or a letter, we do it right away, that day. But we're not tapped out by it. And it's not a lot of work.
Thank you. I, yeah, I guess I'm just, I feel like I'm missing something here. I don't know. And I also feel like during charter revision, the discussion was all about the need for a permanent position because of all of the complex regulatory issues. I mean, being a secretary of the town council was not something that really came up, or, I don't know, I was not on the commission. But from my reading of everything, it wasn't a big point of debate about the role of the clerk. It's, I guess it's a role, to an extent, you know, doing our big budget books in the spring and the agendas, but other than that.
The budget books are done by the comptroller's office.
Oh, okay. Jim, where's the surplus? No, I'm just kidding. Okay. That's, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Counselor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Barbara, during the last term, I know on one occasion, I had you put together a letter. Have any other counselors asked you to put together documents?
I don't think so. You know, I've sent, you know, I've had to send them the letterhead, you know, because we have a virtual letterhead and some blank paper to their house so they can do their own letters. But I, maybe John might have had me do one letter, but I really don't think so. Maybe Jason did. I don't think so. Jason had me do one or two things, but really little. And it was just like, you know, 10 minutes. It was super easy.
Yeah, and that's, that's my point, that it's not taxing. It's not that.
It's not taxing whatsoever.
It's not that your office can't handle it.
No.
It's that, under this job description, it wouldn't be part of the job. So we have nobody to go to. So, you know, I'm, right now, I'm not in favor of creating another position when we can just deal with this and just have smooth transition. And it also begs the question, and I guess it's a question for Mr. Hutt, if we were to hire a part-timer, wouldn't we have to modify the job descriptions before us? Because there's certain stuff in, you know, wouldn't a part-timer have something to do with receiving, reviewing, and disseminating correspondence to and from the council members?
There would more than likely be some overlap of duties and responsibilities, but we've, we already had a job description for town council secretary before. So what we would do is more than likely revise that. Now, if you, you know, keep the position as a part-time position, that's something that we would, you know, be able to do. But as far as creating a job description, one already exists. So probably just revising that and making any changes to that would be appropriate.
But there would be no need for the language, receives reviews, and disseminates correspondence to and from town council members, to be in the job description for the town clerk? Because the part-timer would be doing that.
Yeah, but I would think that that also would happen with the town clerk as well. I mean, I don't think that those duties are so general and broad to begin with that you could exclude them from one job description as opposed to the other. I think that'd be quite, you know, there would be some similarities between the two.
Okay. And if we were to have a part-timer, do you think that individual would have something to do with the recording and preparation of the agenda and the minutes for all town council meetings, including public hearings?
Perhaps.
Well, I would think that's a natural, and that falls into this job description also, for the town clerk.
I disagree, Craig. I don't mean to interrupt you, but.
I'm reading from it.
But I'm sorry. The town clerk has always, the council secretary never once put a public notice in the paper. Okay? It's always been statutorily the town clerk's job. So now you're just, you're moving into, you know, territory you really don't know or understand.
No, I totally understand. Don't tell me I didn't understand something, because you didn't do the minutes. And it specifically says.
Bonding ordinances, we've always done legal notices for a public hearing, period.
It doesn't say legal notices.
You just mentioned that.
I read the language. Where does it say legal notices in that, the language? It doesn't say that. Serves as the clerk of the town council, responsible for the recording and preparation of the agenda and minutes of all town council meetings, including public hearings. Where does it say legal notice?
Public hearing, the notice for a public hearing is a legal notice.
Two lines down. Attends meetings of the town council and provides proper notification of town council meetings and actions.
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't read that. It talked about the one above, and that's what I was asking Mr. Hutt about. Serves as the.
Just, I have one thought, and I'll be quiet. But my one thought is, you have a part-timer, you know, you get a PUC package that is 90 pages in at a time that a part-timer doesn't come in. Let's let it sit on his or her desk until they come in to send it to you. You won't be very happy. You really need an overlap to allow the clerk to be sending you documents, who's there 24/7, compared to someone who is not there. That's all I'll say. I'll be quiet.
Okay, so my question to Mr. Hutt had to do with the preparation of the agenda and minutes of the town council meetings. I would expect that the part-timer, undescribed part-timer, that would be their primary function.
It could be whatever, whoever their supervisor was and assigned them that task.
Well, Sandy, that's what she spent most of her time on, was creating agendas and making minutes. So I don't know what a part-timer would do other than that for the town council. So would it be appropriate to be in the town clerk's job description as well as this undescribed part-timer?
Yes.
Okay. And is that because that individual would be the supervisor of the part-timer? Because it wasn't in the town clerk's job description previously.
It very well may, could be. I mean, it would be, it would be based upon whoever their supervisor was of that position wanted, you know, that individual to perform.
If we're talking about a part-time council secretary, the supervisor is the town council. So you'd have them do whatever you wanted them to do. And we're talking about the agenda. I mean, for the most part, the agenda is, 95, 99% of it is created, put together in the mayor's office with the chairman of the council, and the finished product then goes with some additions or whatever changes are made thereafter to the responsible party. So it's not like the council secretary has ever really. So it's not like the town, the council secretary has ever really. Put the agenda together. I mean, they they're they're putting it in the finished form, but basically all of the language is provided. Um let me offer this. I see nothing wrong with what we're doing now. I'm I'm concerned about. The language being proposed, but everything is in balance now. With the proposal, Greg, of your proposal, I think leads us. To a path where nine people could be requesting things of the town clerk. At that point. The staff, the town clerk is not able to handle that kind of volume. So it it's. We we, there's a lot of overlap and a lot of directions. There's not a problem now. I think by changing the language, it could send us in a direction that could become a problem. Uh and I'd rather that language not be there. You know, we can. Work cooperatively with the way things are now and unless, you know, a problem or a concern comes up, then then we deal with it. But I think the language as it is easily covers what we're talking about here easily.
We've been operating under this blended situation for almost two years now. The. Small amount of individual requests from counselors. Have in no way inundated the office. So. The parade of horribles, I I just don't see happening. You know, all nine counselors inundating the town clerk's office with requests. We're we're. Eliminating a function function that we've had all this time. Um and and I think you proved my point in that ultimately the agenda. And I would think the minutes would be tied to that. Become the responsibility of that employee of the town council, not the town clerk. And yet it's it's in this job description that we are to approve. It wasn't in the town clerk's job description prior. Uh I don't think even.
That was never adopted, that description is, is that correct, Jim?
That's correct.
It was never adopted, so that was never the job description for the town clerk. At one point that was proposed, but.
But the language.
The the big changes here now that the the executive branch of government is the supervisor for the town clerk. Previously, it was the town council. With that switch. Comes a different scenario. And I don't have any problem with what is handled now, but there could be a problem if it. Gradually evolves into something else. The town clerk can't have two bosses.
I I don't disagree. I I don't disagree with that at all.
And and so that with all of individuals feeling they can go to the town clerk. Um if they're dissatisfied, then they compare, they're gonna feel, hey, you know, the town clerk isn't doing what I want. But the town clerk is supervised through the classified service at this point, not by the town council. So. What 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 is happening now is fine. I just think. We're creating a potential conflict by adding language that would lead someone in the position to believe, oh, I've got to do what the council tells me to do. Which conflicts with what the classified service would would direct.
But on the, you're you're adding responsibilities that Sandy used to have to this description. That never were under the came under the purview of the town clerk previously. So I would think that those would have to come out at some point, just like.
Well, we're talking about at some point, if it comes out, that will probably be different group of people that have to discuss that.
I'm done for now.
Thank you. Counselor Testa. Counselor Sullivan.
I think the best course of action is just wait. And see if the next council requires a part-timer. And if you do, you post it, you hire it. But for right now, we don't know who the town clerk will be. Job has to be posted. Jim, as far as the target salary range here, it's all based on experience, right? And where they fit in, I mean, you're not gonna, somebody new walking in is is unless they have. A lot of experience is not gonna start at seventy-five thousand, almost seventy-six thousand, right?
No, that that decision's left up to the appointing authority to, you know, to place them at that salary step that they feel is appropriate.
Right. As far as the argument on spending the money and uh. I I forgot the word. You know, the last I read on social media, we got twenty-seven million dollars sitting out there. Now, I know it's not true. But there's there's enough money to hire a part-time employee if one is needed. And it's not frittering away money. It's money well spent if the council needs that type of assistance. So my recommendation is just to wait. It was a good discussion, but. I honestly thought I'd get out of here early. It's my last meeting. Can we kind of move this along? But that's, those are my comments.
Thank you. Counselor Laffin.
Thank you. Um, Madam Clerk, can you read back the motion? Sorry, thanks.
Do you mean the motion or the amendment?
The amendment.
The amendment?
Sorry, the amendment. Yes, thank you.
To add, um after receives reviews and disseminates correspondence to and from town council members. To add drafts and creates various documents for individual town councils, town counselors at their discretion.
I I I agree with Counselor Sullivan. I think the the parade of horribles that was mentioned. If it's so little, then why are we gonna put it in here? Then if that's the case, then we should have our own staff and we shouldn't be using the town clerk's office. If we all need to be having all these things drafted. I haven't in my six years. Asked the staff or the the clerk to draft anything like that specifically for me. As Counselor Shoratell stated, I just took care of it myself. When we moved from our own staff. From a full-time position, I viewed that as a cost saving and a bureaucratic saving measure. That we were doing away with a certain level that wasn't necessary, that wasn't the way that things functioned. If we get there again, or again, or if we ever get there, then as Counselor Sullivan said. Then we'll talk about whether we need to hire a part-time or a full-time staff. I don't see it happening. I don't think it's necessary. And I think with the exception of. One or two counselors offer on each term. I think those counselors probably had more requests than the other seven or eight combined. And I don't think it's necessary to add it now, not for the reasons I stated earlier, but because of the. The argument for it before, if it's so little, then why bother? You're right. So why bother putting it in there?
Counselor Maroon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess my my question is, what would be the harm of adding the language to the? To this job description? We certainly haven't had any issues in the past two years between the town clerk and the. And the um the council and the mayor's office. I I think the hand wringing over the the executive legislative overreach i- is a little bit overstated. I think if this became an issue in the future, we could certainly address it. But I think at this point. We had a position for so for for someone that did duties for the council. Um we've moved those duties on to the town clerk and we never updated the job description to include those duties. So I don't see any harm in including them now, or we can decide tonight that we need a secretary and start moving in that direction. But I I don't know how you just say, don't worry about it. You know, we'll leave those duties unattended and we'll hope the town clerk uh elects to do them in the future. I just don't see the harm in putting, you know, it's very easy to change a job description. So I'm not certain what all the concern is.
Counselor Laffin.
Because the duties were excessive. That's my response. I don't think we needed it. I don't think we used it.
So my concern, my reply, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
My reply would be that e- even if it was used in a very limited function, it was still a a a service that was provided to the council. So to just see that thrown to the wayside to me seems. Like you're giving something, you're surrendering something for an exchange for nothing.
And I think it just, it's an excessive costly service. That I, and unless the majority disagrees, that I never felt was necessary.
So based on the testimony of the town clerk, though, it hasn't been excessive over the past two years. So I guess assuming going forward, I don't see any reason why we would expect that to change. And if it did change and the town clerk told us there was an issue, then certainly we might have to look at staff or make some other changes.
So then why would we include it if it's if it's not used?
It was used on a limited basis.
So we would we would put it in there as a job description. With the admitted concern from the executive over as the new supervisor role per the charter revision. Just because one or one, two counselors over the past, at least in my experience, six years. Have tried to exercise it instead of just doing it themselves.
So my experience with the mayor is I would trust him as a as a manager to be able to manage an individual that served him and the council.
Mr. Chairman.
Mayor.
I can tell you this is a problem. Because you have a document that tells an employee that they must do something. That may not be what their supervisor feels should happen. But you have the legislative branch of government at odds with the executive branch of government. That's not good with a classified service position. It's civil service. It reports on the classified side to the executive branch of government. There isn't a problem now. Now, if it should develop as a problem, then of course you would wanna hire someone, but I think it's a. It's a very uh. I would call it a a risky and not a well-thought-out position. To add language to a job description that it contains that inherent conflict. Most of the positions we've had in town town that have had problems have been as a result of. Not knowing who the individual reported to, or if it was a multi-member body, basically not being supervised by anyone. I don't want that to happen with the town clerk. So it's got to be very clear if there are issues that arise. The way we're doing it now is fine, but by adding that language that you are in your job description. Requiring an individual to do duty, perform duties for individual council members, that is not. That should not be within the classified service.
Counselor Xandri.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So. On a couple of points here, I I I think that, you know, we we gotta look at the value for what we get. We had a part-timer before. And and I I do recall specifically there were times when I would call in. To the town town council secretary office and I I wouldn't be able to gather. She was either out, it was either outside of her schedule. Or a day she might have had off, or a day she may have been out sick. But when I call the town clerk's office right now, I I always get a follow-up. Even the other day, I called for something. I wanted to speak to Barbara. Barbara was tied up and I think it was Lisa that was handling me right up until Barbara got freed up. And then Barbara took the call and I didn't even necessarily need her to because. Lisa more or less had the right information and and Barbara cleared it up really quickly for me to for the added value. If you think about what we would get. From a part-time stance and the extra expense that it might be, and I don't remember off the top of my head what the town council secretary's office pay was, but. I I wanna take a guess and say it was somewhere around thirty thousand dollars. It was more than that. All right, so I I I'm just.
It it was actually a full-time position.
It was full-time. I thought it was part-time, but okay, thank you. But I mean, at the end of the day. I can call that office nine to five, get an answer. I can send an email. It's responded to very quickly. And and even even as Barbara indicated, it, because it's not always her, the office responds pretty quickly to just about anything we need and and I. I don't have a question who who's the boss of that department and and who the the department manager is going to report to. I I just don't see the reason why we can't kind of add in that language that if if we've got requests as council members. Hey, you know, I I'd like a formal letter written to the to the Department of Health, or I might even write it and send it to Barbara and go, look, I'm traveling. Can can you or someone from your office put it on the letterhead and formally send it to the health department because? I'd like to have them at a meeting and and I wanna make it formal. They'll do it bang and it's done. And and I might have gotten all the writing done myself, or I might even ask them, listen, I'm just jammed. Could you do it for me? They they would probably just say, sure, that would be great. But I I don't wanna go down the road of talking about hiring somebody for the job that we just eliminated because we saved some money doing it. And as far as I'm concerned, I think we get more responsiveness out of that, out of the town clerk office than we probably ever could. Out of a town council secretary position, and that's just my opinion. I could be wrong, but I I kind of. Have grown accustomed to the way we've been doing it right now, and I've got zero issue with it. Plus, it saves money. Plus, we don't have one person in theory, possibly if this situation ever arose, being overloaded by two or three of us. Because first off, even if that situation came to pass. You know, Barbara and her office would say, listen, we've got a couple of items juggling right now. We'll we'll try to disperse it through the people that are in here, but I think we can get it done as opposed to one person. Who most certainly probably wouldn't be able to get it done. And I'm 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 looking at the value of what we're getting. And and I don't, I don't see the harm in continuing down that path, even though the the job is going to hiring because honestly. Right now, she passes the work off to some people that are hired through the town. They're not appointed. Only only Barbara is appointed at this point in time. Her staff is hired employees. I could almost make the argument if if the mayor didn't want the hired employees doing the the co-branded work right now, he could say, no. Tell Barbara, no, don't let them do it. You handle it by yourself or it doesn't get done. And I don't see that coming to pass either. When when we talk about, hey, we gotta tighten up those belts and and look at the cost savings, this was an awesome cost savings. And there's been no conflict of interest that I've been able to see, and I'd be the first one to call it out. Thank you.
Counselor Shoratell.
I'd like to call the question.
Second. Motion and a second to call the question. Uh all those in favor of calling the question signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
I heard one no. So the motion to call the question carries. With that, Madam Clerk, first please call the vote on the amendment.
Aye. Um, let me just get to the right page. If you don't mind. Okay, yes, on the amendment. Fishmine.
Yes.
Laffin.
No.
Laterno.
No.
Maroon.
Yes.
Shoratell.
No.
Sullivan. Testa.
No.
Xandri.
Yes.
Chairman Savoni.
No.
The amendment fails.
Next, the uh the vote on the original motion.
Okay. Move, we approve the job description.
Yes.
Fishmine.
No.
Laffin.
Yes.
Laterno.
Yes.
Maroon.
No.
Shoratell.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Testa.
Yes.
Xandri.
No.
Chairman Savoni.
Yes.
The motion passes.
All right, uh before we go on to three R, uh I noticed that uh. Mr. Lombardi is here and he was reappointed on the consent agenda to the housing authority for a five-year term. Mr. Lombardi, if you could come up here and be sworn. Thank you for your service. Onto item three R.
A move, we approve a bid waiver authorizing the town attorney to interview selected firms for the investigation of and the possible commencement of legal action. Relating to the opioid crisis.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Uh Counselor Fishmine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um so, you know, first off, I think when we um. I don't think this matter should ever been on consent, I just wanna say. So um.
So their action was filed, the Waterbury, because it's one in New Haven too, Waterbury's filed in September. Is there a reason why members of the council were invited to see this presentation or do you have a copy of the presentation?
We received some printed material, I don't have it here with me, but we've made some efforts since to discover what our case would involve, that is, extra insurance costs, et cetera. But we need assistance from people who are familiar with this in order to discover how the facts are put together sufficient to make a cause of action and justify a lawsuit. I'm told that the lawsuits, in general, there's no charge. The only way the firm gets paid is if there is a successful judge, the case reaches a successful conclusion, a judgment is ordered, they receive whatever their percentage would be out of that judgment. But that would be the only payment that we would make. But we need to go through a selection process to determine what firm, and I guess there are three or four that have experience in this, interview and find out who has experience. I think the town attorney can speak to it.
Yes, right now, there's three firms that have approached us and we believe there's going to be a fourth firm. As the mayor noted and as Counselor Fishbein was aware, they did attend a meeting in Waterbury. It wasn't at the invitation of the law firm, that was actually the city of Waterbury. And they were impressed by the presentation and thought that the town should explore it. A law firm would have an initial obligation to go through the town records and see whether a suit by the town of Wallingford is warranted. These are not class actions. Maybe joined at trial by other firms, it would still be our own lawsuit. The law firm would go through the records again at no cost to the town of Wallingford and then make a recommendation to us if we went forward again, it would be no cost to the town of Wallingford. We would not be advancing costs, we would not be responsible for the costs. If in fact, there was not a successful conclusion, we would still not be paying those costs. So there's no downside to the town. We feel that it is a natural thing for a waiver of bid that Attorney Small and myself wish to interview these law firms, have the mayor sit in if he wishes, then make a recommendation to the mayor. The mayor would decide which law firm to go forward with.
So, isn't it usually an expert or someone in the field who would be able to opine on whether or not there's a cause of action?
In my experience, that expert is often the lawyer who's being asked to bring it.
So four law firms have appeared on behalf of Waterbury?
Well, three law firms have approached the town of Wallingford. Two of those law firms are actually representing the city of Waterbury in its action.
Okay, you had mentioned the three that you knew of, you thought of four.
Yes, that's correct.
And I'm just saying that as of today, the new appearance was filed yesterday, four law firms have appeared in the Waterbury case.
Is that right?
Yes. So I have to believe that at least those four law firms believe that they have a legitimate cause of action. So what's being investigated further? I would think this would be in two parts. You'd be going to a neutral party to investigate, not somebody who has a stake in the race to make the determination. And then, once that's established, because there's no race here, I mean, there's no, I mean, these things go back to like 2007 was actually when Purdue, which is being sued by Waterbury, actually settled with the federal government and paid millions of dollars and three of their executives went to jail. So, but yet they're being sued in this lawsuit. It just appears from the correspondence that we're all in on this, there is no investigation. What's anticipated in this investigation?
Well, I think the belief of the law firm, and I tend to occur, is that the effect of the opioid crisis differs in different municipalities. They want to make sure that the criteria they've used in lawsuits previously is met here. You know, you're a lawyer, I'm a lawyer, there's other lawyers here. Lawyers don't like to get involved in contingency fee cases unless they think it's going to be worthwhile. You may have a great cause of action with limited damages, so you put in all the effort and the award at the end doesn't justify what you did. I think that's what they want to look into of whether in fact, Wallingford has suffered the consequences of this crisis to the point of that there's a reasonable expectation that the award would be significant.
So another thing that lawyers who do these kinds of cases want to do is reduce their expenses. So we all know that Waterbury is going to need an expert to opine on duty breach causation of damages.
I'm not talking, I thought you were talking about an expert to decide whether we should sue or not.
Yeah, which is a totally, you're all in on this, it appears from the correspondence. You're not going to a neutral, you're interviewing law firms.
That is correct.
So what, when these actions are brought, you want to keep the expenses down for the client. So by getting Wallingford involved in this and Waterbury and Wallingford perhaps using the same expert reduces the expenses for Waterbury ultimately, because you're going to more than likely use the same one, which is a concern to me.
I want to reemphasize that there is no cost to the town of Wallingford. The expert would not be paid out of town funds. If we were unsuccessful in the case, we're not responsible for reimbursing anybody for these funds. So as far as minimizing the cost of going forward, I'm sure the law firm would like to minimize their cost and I'm sure that what you suggest will probably be true, that the same expert used in other litigations will be retained and used in this if we go forward.
So similar lawsuits have been attempted by individuals in the past and to my knowledge, none of them have been successful. Are you aware through, because I haven't seen the presentation that you guys were given, did they represent that any of these lawsuits have ever been successful?
It was Attorney Small and Mayor Dickinson attended the presentation.
Okay, so Mayor, did they indicate to you that these lawsuits have ever been successful?
Well, the primary one was the 2007, there was a civil case as well as the criminal.
By the feds?
There was also a civil case because according to the lawyers speaking at the meeting, they provided a good deal of the evidence necessary for the criminal prosecution.
Yeah, that was as a result of the federal government brought a regulatory action and they resolved that. I think there was a $3 million fine or something like that. And as a result of that, criminal action came after that, that they participated in.
Well, no, there was a civil suit because the lawyers who were representing Waterbury, they provided information that they had put together as part of a suit. The regulatory action was criminal and that was a separate action by the federal government. The result of that civil suit, I don't know, but this is a subject that is obviously one that has gathered more and more attention, most recently, of course, the 60 Minutes program. And there's a belief that the more communities, the greater the number of the communities that get involved with this, the quicker it can be, the mitigation, the redress, the help to people who are suffering from addiction as a result of use of opioids.
So your correspondence references impact on police departments. I didn't see any portion of the Waterbury lawsuit extending to that. It really has to do with increased health insurance costs that they have to pay for their employees that are perhaps addicted and that kind of stuff. What's the impact on police departments separated and apart from, let's say, alcohol and drunk driving? Are we going to be suing distributors next? Is that...
Well, I believe the use of Narcan, the incidence of that alone, I know that's been a significant effect for our police department. So all of these elements are part of the picture and whether that's cited in the information you have at Waterbury, I know the mayor in Waterbury is, or he had been the police chief, so he was very familiar with the impact on first responders due to the opioid crisis.
And what about doctors? Are we, because in the Waterbury case, they sued some doctors too. Are we going to be going after doctors that are prescribing these opiates as well?
It depends upon what information is uncovered. We're not certain how you obtain that information. If the attorneys who have expertise in this are able to advise us on how we can obtain information, then certainly that could be part of the lawsuit as well.
And why isn't the Attorney General handling this? Because Wallingford didn't get involved in the tobacco litigation, neither did any other municipality, the AG's office did it. Why isn't this an AG's issue?
I can't speak for the AG, but I can certainly refer to my own disappointment really in the necessity for the General Assembly to pass a law, I believe it was, it might have been 2014, 2016, actually there was one earlier than that, dictating how much in the way of medication could, should be or can be given to patients. I think it's a sad commentary when it takes law to dictate what medications can be provided by the medical community.
I'll take it.
We have to, we really have to think about where, how far this goes, that the medical community has not jumped right on this and said, you know, there's a problem here, we've got to get on top of it. At one time, the hospitals, their accreditation were based upon, from the information I have, based upon surveys that dealt with how the patients felt they were, their recovery, how their satisfaction with the treatment they'd received, and you got high marks if people did not report they were still in pain. So there's multiple parties here, but it's a real, it should be a real concern to all of us that there's been a necessity for laws to be passed here in Connecticut in order to control how many pills are being issued to people, under what circumstances, whether you're a minor or adult. I think Mr. Welch is here, Ken Welch from the Coalition, he probably has more information on this than I have, and they've been at the forefront of alerting people to the problem. But certainly from my standpoint, when it takes a state law to be dictating how treatment is rendered in the medical community, I think that should be a wake-up call for all of us because we all trust the doctors, the hospitals, all to be giving us good information. So where this goes, I'm not sure, but the more everyone becomes aware of this as a real problem in our society, the better capable we are of addressing it and bringing relief to those who are now suffering from addictions that they would never have had except that they took medication prescribed by a doctor.
So I would just bring to your attention that during this past legislative session, we changed that law and actually made it more restrictive and I didn't get any thank you notes about that, but I did vote in favor of that. The FDA controls the production, dissemination of opiates and to our knowledge, except for individuals that have addictive propensities or misused prescriptions, they're used as prescribed. So it's sort of like a product liability case. Was that addressed during this presentation?
I can't remember a, you know, it was a couple of months ago that I attended. I do believe there are references to people being encouraged to take the medication right away, avoid any pain. There was a member of the general public there who recited never being addicted to anything and now went through a terrible time period of trying to control an addiction and as a result of the opioids. There's more than enough for us to be concerned about and is the FDA implicated? Well, you certainly can find they're implicated because the story, what was spoken by the drug company representatives was, this won't cause addictions. So everyone trusted that based upon apparently no bona fide studies. As a result, everyone were led down a garden path. And then, of course, we had in 2016, the action by the federal government where, at least from some people in the FDA, felt that the action taken was going to injure adversely affect their ability to prosecute, to look to address this problem. And legislation was passed at the federal level that removed a lot of their ability to deal with this subject in what certainly many of us would feel would be a responsible manner. So, you know, we're, I think Wallingford, if we can show injury, we should be part of an effort to alert the American public. You can't just assume that what you're going to take as medication is going to be good for you. That's terrible. That's a terrible thing to have to say, but given the history, you have to be wary of what you're told you should be able to take because there are terrible consequences as a result of what we've seen since, and this has been building since 1995 or 96.
Why now? Why should Wallingford be one of the guinea pigs?
I don't think we're a guinea pig at all. I think we're well behind where we should be, given what the records show as far as the suffering going on. And I think, maybe Mr. Welch, can you just fill in?
We're talking the legal aspect. This is, we're just talking about the legal, I don't think Mr. Welch can opine on the legal aspect. Why get involved at the beginning? Why not learn from others' mistakes and bring a lawsuit when there is eventually something that's successful? Why now? I don't think Mr. Welch can opine.
Okay, but there has been success. But I get very worried when I see what has happened at the federal level about interference on bringing redress. So if we don't take action, if someone else doesn't take action, if we don't all act as concerned citizens for the well-being of our society, we can't wait for someone else to do that. There's been too much waiting. I mean, it's been, what, over 20 years and it creates building and building and building. And now to get on top of this will take years. The costs can be enormous for the care, rehabilitation, et cetera.
Why now? Why should Wallingford be the, one of the guinea pigs?
I don't think we're a guinea pig at all. I think we're well behind where we should be, given what the, what the records show as far as the suffering going on, and I think, maybe Mr. Welch, can, can you just fill in?
We're talking the, the legal aspect. This is, we're just talking about the legal, I don't think Mr. Welch can opine on the legal aspect. Why, why get involved at the beginning? Why not learn from others' mistakes and bring a lawsuit when there is eventually something that's successful? Why now? I don't, I don't think Mr. Welch can opine.
Okay, but there has been success, but I get very worried when I see what has happened at the federal level about interference on bringing redress. So if we don't take action, if someone else doesn't take action, if we don't all act as, as concerned citizens for the well-being of our society, we can't wait for someone else to do that. There's been too much waiting. I mean, it's been, what, over 20 years, and it creates building and building and building. And now to get on top of this will take years. The cost can be enormous for the care, rehabilitation, et cetera, of people who now can't function the way they did before because of the opioids.
Perhaps, we have a statute of limitations issue. Are you gonna, are you, if, if this is passed tonight, are you gonna come back to us periodically on the status? I mean, will you accept some sort of monthly report, or is this something where, you know, we're just not gonna hear anything for five years and newspaper?
I, I will have to talk to the town attorney's office as to what is appropriate, given the, the nature of what has to be inquired into, and a lot of the aspects of such a suit. I mean, again, it's not going to cost us money, but hopefully we can be part of a loud voice in the United States of America saying, we see a problem and it needs to be addressed.
At some level, time and attention of our town costs money. I mean, if we're gonna get the police department involved in this, you, you don't think our police chief and staff is gonna be deposed with regard to the impacts on police? I mean, it's allegedly, it's based upon your letter, it's part of our case. That, that costs money. It takes away from public safety. There is a, a cost, and I'm just concerned about going down this road when there's no success shown.
I don't know how you can say there's no success shown, Craig, when there have been criminal convictions.
In 2007.
Yes, and since then, the DEA has been under fire for doing their job. We should be more concerned about that than a lot of other things. Something is breaking down somewhere, and now that we've been alerted to it, we have a duty for public safety, as well as humanitarian, as well as moral grounds, to say, wait a minute, enough is enough.
So then, and I, I don't want to belabor this, I, I just, I look at alcohol, and I can tell you that we have many people that get into drunk driving accidents, and, you know, alcohol's a regulated product. And while I'm not in favor of this, I, I question why you don't take the same position. It just, it doesn't make sense.
Well, alcohol is not prescribed. You do not have, basically, innocent people encouraged to take something that creates an addiction. And I don't know that there are any doctors who say, oh, drink, drink all the alcohol you can have, and I'll, and I'll make sure you get as much as you can have, so you'll feel no pain, and it won't have any harmful effect on you. I don't think there's any doctor doing that.
But, but the problem is, we have the, the product being made, and the intervening action is the prescription, and yet we sue the, the creator of the product. The intervening action is gonna become an issue. In fact, it's, it's already become an issue in the Waterbury case. In fact, they sued individuals in that case that have had no ties to the state of Connecticut ever. I, I don't have a lot of faith in this at all.
But that, that's a legal question, whether you can reach someone, that's fine, but we have the FDA involved, we have drug companies involved in not telling a full story, basically being deceptive in order to sell a product, we have the medical providers getting involved, not certainly most, but certainly some, who were wrongfully writing prescriptions, at least in my opinion, and the result is, we have people, and it's a society that it, you can go back through history, major, major, even wars have been fought over the, the inflicting of, of, basically opioids, you know, whether it's drugs on a society. And people in the society said, no, we won't tolerate this anymore. Well, we're going through that now, in a modern society. It's 2017, the new millennium, and we're dealing with something we shouldn't have to be dealing with, but people are being injured, they're being hurt, they're being deceived.
I don't, I don't disagree that people are being injured, I don't disagree that people are being deceived. It's whether or not the town of Wallingford should be getting involved in a lawsuit, because there is no investigating, I, I just don't see an investigation. I see, we're gonna go hire a law firm to get involved in this. I mean, just, it's pretty clear to me from, from the letter, from everything you've said tonight. So I'd like to see an investigation by a neutral, and then come back to us, then let's talk about it. But all in on this, I'm just not in favor of, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else on the council care to comment? Mr. Welch?
Hi, Ken Welch, 21 Pleasant Street. I'm, I'm also here as president of the Coalition. I, I have some prepared remarks which I want to share, but I want to respond to you, Craig, a little bit. There have been some significant changes in the way many governing bodies within the, the medical community, and even some of the overseers for hospitals, and even the legislature, have viewed what organizations like Purdue Pharma did, and they're coming around now, finally, to say this is wrong. That's what's changed. There's a growing number of significant organizations that are saying, what happened was wrong, and you were responsible for this. The prescribing piece in the middle doesn't matter. If the basic premise was bad to begin with and you lied about it, you're responsible for, for the outcomes. And that's, that's the general attitude now. But I, as I said, I did have some, some prepared comments that I'd like to share, because it speaks to the real cost here. First off, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak, and start by thanking the council for their continued support for the work that the Coalition does in this community. I want to thank the mayor's office, the mayor's council on substance abuse prevention, Craig Turner and his staff, the police department, the health department, board of ed, all other town departments, businesses, organizations, individuals, and most especially, those families that paid the ultimate price of a lost life. They've continued to work tirelessly with us to overcome the devastating effects of this national opioid epidemic. This has truly become a heroic, town-wide Wallingford effort. Wallingford has lost dozens of lives and more to come. The scourge of this crisis will continue to haunt our community for years to come. Fighting to save loved ones from the throes of addiction will take its toll on family, friends, and neighborhoods for years to come. The formidable price we pay at the local level goes far beyond the cost of adding police officers, distributing Narcan, hiring, hiring, training police dogs, litigating cases of drug dealers, doctor shopping organizations, and unscrupulous doctors, adding a wellness committee for our school environment, providing hope and support group for families, a sibling support group, a bereavement group. The real expense goes beyond the systemic costs that are associated with the increase in counselors, trainings, and awareness events. This epidemic has changed the landscape of our town and the fabric of our relationships. It is now obvious to many that the pharmaceutical industry was instrumental in creating this insidious loss of life, over 200,000 nationwide currently claiming over 150 lives per day, preventable lives. And they did this in the name of profits, billions and billions of profits. The federal government has had ample time to take the lead on this. Our state has finally moved to a position itself to pursue a suit for the same purpose, but what will that benefit Wallingford? This is a big deal, a really big deal for hundreds of Wallingford citizens, and it's important that we endorse and support the lawsuit and recover the expenses in the name of those no longer with us and those that are still suffering. The Coalition will continue to work on educating and support throughout our town. We hope the effort to move this lawsuit forward continues with fortitude and vigor. Obviously, we've been personally moved by it, you're well aware of our story and the work that the Coalition does. The mayor's taken an interest and, and started to get educated on all of the things that we're dealing with every day. I think there's significant reason to pursue this, and at no cost. I think that your, your concerns are legitimate, and we'd be willing to spend some time with you to share the information that we have. I think it'll change your mind on your position. It's not a legal issue anymore, I think that's pretty much been determined. There's a number of lawsuits that have been settled, over $300 million in addition to the 2007 settlement, and there's a lot of pending lawsuits now. To my, my knowledge, about 160 of them. So we're late in the game, we're not early, we're not, we're not the guinea pig here. Thank you.
Larry Morganstein, South Main Street. The first thing is, I called Jason, maybe somebody else asked for this to be pulled from consent. I agree that this shouldn't have been on the consent, but my hope has, for what would happen, has been achieved tonight. It has been really good to hear the mayor speak so passionately. I know that I've certainly not sung your praises often, but to hear you champion and talk so forthrightly is one of the reasons I thought this was an important issue, not to be left, not to be talked about. It gave you a chance to speak passionately and elegantly about such an important issue that affects us all. It's about leadership. It's a leadership that we've been asking for people to take here in this town, to be vocal and lead us towards this. It's something that the Coalition has been working towards, so tonight I give you my compliments, because this is what I hoped would happen, that you would speak passionately and other people would too. It also gave Ken a chance to speak, which I think is always good, it gets the word out to more and more people. So I, I'm glad that this was not just a consent item. It has far more significance. It may end up being symbolic in the long run, it may not come to fruition, but there has been settlements beyond the Purdue Pharma 2007. There's been cities, there's been towns, there's been organizations that are presently in lawsuits. A few quick things, in terms of the future, is it possible that we could have a presentation like Waterbury gave with whatever representation we have? I think that would be useful, not only for the public, but for the council.
It, it would depend upon where we are in the lawsuit and what information would be made available, I, you know, I don't know at this point, without, without meeting with the lawyers and what's the nature of what they need to gather, and we, we'd have to look at that as time goes on.
Yeah, well, obviously, Waterbury had put together some sort of presentation, so I don't know whether that included the law firm at that time, but again, if something similar could be brought here, I think that could be useful for all.
As I recall, they didn't talk with any detail about the case they were bringing. It was in general to alert everyone and see if other communities were interested in joining the effort, but I don't think they shared a lot of detail, as I recall, with regard to their lawsuit.
Another question along those lines, my understanding from reading about this, have other communities joined with Waterbury? I believe there was like seven or eight other communities, and have they signed on to the same law firm with Waterbury?
I don't have any detailed information on that, I don't know if you do, we're, we're not sure.
Okay, okay, thank you, and thank you for speaking and championing something that, it's important that you speak on this issue, and the more you speak, the better for our community. Thank you.
Mr. Morganstein, if I may, I think you would agree with me that I've been generally supportive of the work of the Coalition, and I have not shied away from this issue. So I, when I put things on consent, it's not with any personal attachment or personal bias that I do so. I looked at this item, and the second paragraph, the last sentence by, from Attorney Small, was that the agreement would have to be based upon a contingency fee with no upfront cost paid to, paid by the town. So from a financial perspective, I didn't see this as a big budget shaker, but I appreciate the importance, I have no objection to things being removed from the consent agenda, and I, I appreciate the fact that you saw the benefit of the discussion.
And, and untaken, I, I think, even that, I think is important, that people know that the contingency is that it wouldn't be upfront cost to the town itself, but that the law firm upon a settlement would then get a fee upon it. So even that alone, I think, is worth for people to be more understanding of, and again, I'll compliment the mayor, and I'll compliment you and other, others on the council for, as time has gone on, the support given to the Coalition and the community is so important. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public care to speak, then I bring it back to the council. Counselor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In answer to a question, Waterbury, New Haven, and New Britain have brought actions. Also, there was an action that was just September 1, went to decision, and actually, the pharmaceutical company won, a Connecticut case, which, you know, goes in line with what I was saying I, I'm still concerned, and I, and I know we got no commitment from the mayor, about reporting to us or letting us know what's, what's going on. So, Mr. Chairman, I don't know how we deal with that. I know I've been disappointed with updates on the CMEC litigation. I, I just don't want it, you know, which most of that information I've gotten from the press first. I don't want to be in that same situation, because I, I see some sort of legal action in the town of Wallingford's future. I, I don't see any other avenue, based upon what I heard tonight. So I don't know if we can arrange some sort of reporting, which is us, you know, sort of demanding something from the administration, I know I'm gonna hear, we can't make them do anything, but.
We are not gonna do anything that jeopardizes the potential success of the case, so if, if people are really interested in hearing something month by month, probably some months where we'll have nothing more to tell you. I mean, I, I don't have any objection to that, but certainly I am not gonna be participating in anything that would jeopardize a case.
Understood, and, and, you know, with all due respect, I don't want to either, but I, I just, I flashback to the CMEC litigation where rulings entered and we were not informed, and I, I just don't want to get into that situation again. I, I respect what happened then, and, you know, that's not the purpose of tonight, but I'd like to just be informed as to what's going on. Certainly, if it's a state action, you know, through the judicial website, everything's hyperlinked, and I can look at what's filed. If it becomes federal, I can do that too, but my fellow counselors can't. Well, Attorney Savoni could. But at some point, I would see some of this stuff going federal, so, but I thank you for your representation, that we'll get some sort of updates, and I know that's all I can get, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
There's nothing else from the council. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Fishbein?
No.
Laffin?
Yes.
Laterno?
Yes.
Thank you. Marone?
Yes.
Chertel?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Okay, thank you. At this point, I am going to skip ahead one, we're gonna address item six, and then seven, and then we'll come back to item five. So if I could have a motion for item six to go into executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I move we go into executive session pursuant to Connecticut General Statute Sections 1-206B with respect to the pending workers' compensation case in the matter of McPherson versus Town of Wallingford, a Board of Education claim.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor of going into executive session signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, for the executive session, we'll retreat to the council office, so the chambers do not have to be cleared. Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor of coming out of executive session signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. I declare the council back in public session. Onto item seven.
Mr. Chairman, I move we authorize a settlement in the pending workers' compensation case in the matter of McPherson versus Town of Wallingford as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Laterno?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Chertel?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. Back to number five, the public question and answer period. Anyone for the public question and answer period?
The mic.
There being no hands, we're going to go back to item eight, which is a public hearing to consider an act on the following ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Appropriating $6,205,000 for Improvements to Townwide Radio Communication System and Authorizing the Issue of $6,205,000 Bonds to the Town of the Town to Meet Said Appropriation and Pending Issuance Thereof, the Making of Temporary Borrowings for Such Purpose." I hereby convene the public hearing for the $6,205,000 appropriation and bond authorization for the radio communication system. The ordinance, which is the subject of this public hearing, is available to the public and may be obtained at this meeting from the town clerk. Is there a motion and a second to read the title of the proposed ordinance and waive the reading of the remainder of the ordinance incorporating its full text into the minutes of this meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Laterno?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Chertel?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
And Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Resolution appropriating $6,205,000 for improvements to townwide radio communication system and authorizing the issue of $6,205,000 bonds of the town to meet said appropriation and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose. Are there any comments from the public? There being no comments from the public, I call the public hearing closed. And I think before we go on to approving the bond, I'll allow the council to ask questions of the officers present. If you would please identify yourselves for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. William Wright, Police Chief.
Mark McColsky, Deputy Police Chief.
Richard Higard, Fire Chief.
Joe Sutner, Deputy Fire Chief.
Thank you, gentlemen. We did talk about this system at the request for a bid waiver, and what were the results?
So at the October 24th Town Council meeting, the council gave us the authority to enter into negotiation with Motorola for the purposes of standing up a new radio system, a trunked radio system for the town. We've done that work. It was extensive, back and forth. As you see from the summary that I presented to you on December 1st, we've realized some significant cost savings from Motorola as we were hopeful that we would, bringing the price to what's before you this evening, which includes a number of ancillary costs that we've included in the proposal to stand the system up completely outside of what Motorola, excuse me, would include in their system. I can tell you that the collaboration that's going on townwide amongst the departments that are involved in this has been really incredible. There's a lot of interest amongst our partners to see this through completely. And I think it's fair to say that, I know there was some discussion early on about whether or not we should consult with a consultant and hire a consultant to do that work. The amount of work that's going on with our work group, I think, far outweighs any thing that we would have gotten from someone that we were able to put under contract for that purpose. We saw through a number of things that have saved what we believe is a significant amount of money. Niceties that would be great to have, but certainly something that we don't need. So the proposal before you this evening is that which represents the work that this group has done collectively, and we're certainly willing to take any questions that you might have.
Questions from the council? Counselor Fishbein?
Where's Mr. Fozzie? Receiving bonds? He's usually here. I'm just, is this...
He's at another community. I can reach him by phone.
No, I just...
There's a problem. But he would be here, but both, both communities have issues that he needs to be present for, so.
Okay. I just questioned in the past, you know, because I guess we pay him hourly. He's always here other times, and I've thought that was unnecessary. So I just note that he's not here, and, you know, we're proceeding. So that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
With Mr. Chairman's may, I don't know if Joe charges us for his attendance, but that does spark my memory. I will find out from Joe, and I will let all nine of you know. That's all, that's right with you folks. I don't know if he does, and if he does, I don't think he charges us his full rate. But I'll find out.
Any other questions from the council? Counselor Sullivan?
Thank you. Thank you for your due diligence on this. And thank you so much for the memorandum describing the costs and the breakdown. And I think it should be noted that the town received almost a $2 million discount. We initially talked about $7 million, almost seven, well, over, let's call it 7.6 million, almost 7.7 million for this system. And due to your efforts, we're looking at a discount of almost $2 million. So thank you for that. This is an important system. It positions us for the future. And I'm just very pleased that, you know, with our bond rating and with the, with the bonding we currently have, we still remain one of those municipalities that is far below others in bonding out big projects. So basically, I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you. This is exciting news for Fire Department, the Police Department, Board of Education. So I am looking forward to seeing this system in place. And Chief, the only question I had is, once the bond is approved, how soon before we can start moving on getting this installed?
So after the waiting period for the bond?
Yeah.
We, in between now and then, it is our intent to have two distinct meetings. One with Motorola, our current service provider, their engineer, a Motorola's engineer, to go over this proposal line by line and make sure that we're all on the same page. We intend to have a very separate meeting, if you will, with our own town officials. The building department is going to need to be heavily involved with building permits. The purchasing department will need to be involved, planning and zoning potentially to some extent. So our intent is to get all that done between this evening and then the end of the waiting period. Thereafter, I believe that most of this gear from servers and switches is probably readily available and can start to be built. The civil work, if you will, that needs to take place at all the sites will actually obviously have to wait until the spring thaw. But their proposal to us is that this could take 12 to 18 months to complete from start to finish. It's our intent to get some of our own staff out to Illinois where our system is going to be built and tested there. It's been highly recommended to us by some people that have been helping us to do that, with the intent of trying to actually break it while it's out there, because we don't want it broken here.
Right.
After that, Motorola will deliver the system to our vendor, which is over in Nagatuck. They'll set it up again over there. And our intent is to go over there and see it work completely there. In the meantime, there's a tremendous amount of civil work that needs to be done with, with towers. Our biggest concern remains, and I think I mentioned this when we were before you on October 24th, the tower next to the station needs to be replaced. The age of the building and the proximity to our neighbors there causes us concern for the foundation and getting it in there. Motorola has indicated that it's not, unlike other sites they've done this with, but if something is going to hit that contingency pretty hard right away, it will be that. We don't want to move the tower to another location on our property for all the obvious reasons. So we have a lot of work ahead of us, but I'm confident that this group, not only the four that are here this evening, but others that have been helping us along, will see this through successfully. So it'll start right away, but it will take a lot of time to get it done.
Good answer, and good luck. Thank you. Thank you all. Anything else from the council? There being none, is there a motion and a second that the proposed ordinance adopting $6,205,000 for the radio communication system and bond authorization be adopted?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion from the council? There being none, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Certainly. Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Laterno?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Chertel?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
The motion passes. The ordinance passes. Ordinance is adopted.
Congratulations to all of us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Onto item number nine. "I hereby convene the public hearing for the School System Capital Improvement Program Phase II Amending Ordinance. The ordinance, which is the subject of this public hearing, is available to the public and may be obtained at this meeting from the town clerk. Is there a motion and a second to read the title of the proposed ordinance and to waive the reading of the remainder of the ordinance incorporating its full text into the minutes of this meeting?"
Yes, so moved.
Second.
Did you get the motion and the second? Terrific. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Laterno?
Gone.
Marone?
Yes.
Chertel?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
Motion passes.
"An Ordinance Amending an Ordinance Appropriating $3,300,000 for School System Capital Improvement Program Phase II and Authorizing the Issue of $3,300,000 Bonds of the Town to Meet Said Appropriation and Pending the Issuance Thereof, the Making of Temporary Borrowings for Such Purpose." Are there any comments from the public? There being no comments from the public, I call the public hearing closed. Is there a motion and a second that the proposed amending ordinance for the School System Capital Improvement Program Phase II and Bond Authorization be adopted?
Yes, so moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Did you get the motion and the second? Thank you. Questions, comments from the council? Counselor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I, perhaps, Mr. Boz, you know, why are we amending instead of, it appears that the old is separate from the new. So I guess procedurally, why are we amending?
Well, actually, these funds are for items that were in the first part of the Phase II of the Board of Education Capital Improvement Plan. The projects that are involved with this amendment, in the first go-around, it was specifically for design and ultimately going out to bid and getting these pricing so that they can go ahead and move forward. So it's, I would call it maybe Phase IIb, if you will, but it's part of the same projects that have been authorized by the council last, oh, several months back, eight months ago, nine months ago.
So assuming that to be the case, am I to understand that the design portion of these projects, which I'm in support of, cost almost $8 million, and the actual acquisition and installation costs 3.3 million?
No, the, the initial authorization, bond ordinance, was 3.3 million. Let me just see. Some of that was, some estimates of some construction costs.
Yeah, I had it backwards.
Yeah, that's okay. So it's 3.3 million. Some of that was for contingency, some of that was for a much smaller projects which have been completed, and some of them are, you know, a little bit for bonding costs. What you're looking at here is 7.8, 7,875,000 of new monies primarily for construction of the two major projects on that original authorization, which I call Phase, just call it Phase A, 2A, if you will.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Any other comments from the council, questions from the council? There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Laterno?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Chertel?
Yes.
Sullivan?
I don't know. Mark, do you really need this?
It's going to be a busy year.
Okay, you got it. Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
The amended ordinance is adopted.
Yes, it is. We do have something for executive session, but before we go into executive session, I do, I want to acknowledge that I have served on this council with Counselor Sullivan since my first election to the council. And I've, for the significant majority of the time, enjoyed serving with him, and enjoyed the perspective he's brought to the council and the enthusiasm. And he and I are friends, so I'm not going to say that I'm going to miss him, because I will see him, but I will miss him being at our meetings and participating as a counselor. Counselor Sullivan, I'm personally going to thank you for your service to the town for these eight years.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. If there's nothing else, then Counselor Testa?
I will take this opportunity to thank my friend John for his service to the town. His honorable, responsible, passionate service for the town. We became friends before he got here. I've served with him the whole time he's been here. It has been a pleasure and an honor to be his colleague and to consider, I consider him my friend, and I know I will continue to see you, but I thank you.
You will.
And we'll miss you here.
Thank you, Vinny. Thank you very much. Okay, Fishbein. Counselor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm going to get out of here. Now I know I'm really not going to get out of here.
And I have no questions, but, you know, I, I think I got elected for the first time along with Counselor Sullivan, and I've been up here the whole time. And I think John's role very effectively has been to keep me in check, and I appreciate that. And he's, I've always looked to John for his different perspective on things. We don't always agree. Sometimes those two paths do cross, but I too thank John for his service, and you will surely be missed. So, thank you, John.
Thank you, Craig. Thank you. Counselor Chertel? All right, here we go. Well, I just want...
Well, I just wanna thank you, Counselor Sullivan. As a rookie, it's hard enough to be up here, but when you're trying to talk and someone's trying to make you laugh to your right off camera, and that would be you for the last two years, but, uh, it's been an honor to serve with you and, and next to you, and maybe it'll happen again someday, hopefully, so, uh, best of luck and thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you very much.
Uh, Counselor Laffin?
I was just trying to get you to dinner, but now since everybody's talking, we all have to say something, so the other counselors, I weren't gonna say anything, but I think of something. Um, John, you're gonna be missed. Um, I'll always, uh, be looking to my right for the, for the quick wit and the humor. Uh, you always did what you felt was best and right for the town, um, without concern for politically where that might have felt, um, on the issues or with, with the people sitting up here with you. Um, you have a, a concern for the citizens, for the public safety, and for the future of Wallingford, and, um, I think we'll miss you up here for now, um, but I don't wanna say that that is long-term or forever.
Thank you, Tom. Counselor Laterno?
There's no way I could let this go.
Figured.
Johnny, thank you for your service. Um, we've been friends for many years. We go back, our, my, one of my daughters babysitted for your, for your son.
You married my son?
Yeah, and, and I, as a justice of peace, married your son. So it, it's, you, you brought a lot of perspective to the council, and times we agreed, times we didn't agree, but, uh, um, you did your job. You did it well, and it's gonna be missed.
Thank you, Shade. Appreciate it. Let me, uh, if I may say a couple words. You might as well.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanna look into, you got me on center care? There you go. Thanks, Scotty. I see the light. I wanted to, uh, thank all of you. Yeah, it's been a nice ride for eight years. I don't know if it's forever. Maybe not. Maybe so. I don't know. Um, but, uh, we've had some interesting conversations. We've seen people come and go. In, uh, Chairman Parisi, uh, Counselor Escotti, and of course, uh, Counselor Farrell, Jerry Farrell Jr. Um, but I do want to, uh, reach out to the people that I've tried to represent well over the past eight years. I've tried to be honest, uh, in all of my decisions. I've tried to, um, champion schools and children, social programs, making sure that our social programs at budget time were always cared for, and always tried to do the right thing. Are we perfect up here? Absolutely not. Am I perfect? No, I'm not perfect. Um, but I did enjoy the last eight years serving the residents of Wallingford and, uh, and, uh, working with these fine people. Uh, you know, it's easy to criticize, whether it's on social media, whether it's here on the other side of the microphone, uh, but I'll tell you, until you've sat in this seat and you have the information we have and the decisions we need to make that impact, everyone out there, kids, parents, grandparents, people of means, people of little means, it's a big responsibility, and for the past eight years, I've taken it seriously, and I've tried to do my very best to care for all the citizens of Wallingford. What, what the future holds, I do not know. I can tell you this, that, um, my daughter is now on the Lyman Hall basketball team, so basically this frees me up on Tuesdays and Fridays, and I know I'll see all you guys around. Uh, we're not gonna say farewell, as the mayor stated last Wednesday, we're not gonna say farewell. Um, we'll see each other around, but what the future brings, I'm not sure. I may enjoy life outside of town council. I know I've done my fair share. Eight years is a lot of time away from home, and my, uh, lovely wife is here, and I think we're gonna go get a wine after this. Yeah, and, uh, I just wanted to say again, thank you all. I've had a blast. It's a lot of fun, and at some point I'll get back and clean out all this stuff underneath my desk. There's a lot of stuff. There's a microwave, washer, dryer, a couple of things.
Is it like George Costanza's desk?
It is. It is, it is, and I'll have to turn in my key, obviously, to the council office, which, I don't know why, there's nothing in it. But I do want one thing for you, Mayor. Actually, two things. Uh, I want my nameplate off of this. I've already, uh, negotiated with Bill Salata, and I would like that. Second thing is, if you have anything where you need somebody who is, you know, has a great deal of integrity and is concerned about the town, call me. Okay? With that, thank you. See you around, guys.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Can I have a motion to go into executive session?
Mr. Chairman, I move we go into executive session pursuant to Section 1-206D of the Connecticut General Statutes with respect to the purchase, sale, and/or leasing of property.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor of going into executive session signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare the council in executive session. Please kindly clear the council chambers. Thank you. Call the meeting back to order. Is there a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor of coming out of executive session signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare the meeting back in public session. There being no further business on the agenda, a motion to adjourn is in order. Is there a motion adjourned?
So moved.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare this meeting adjourned.